square foot addition to the existing refrigerated warehouse building. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to hear this item? Anyone on the Commission?
I'll block as much as I can.
Okay. Number three, do you want to say something here, Eric?
Item three, we're recommending, it was on the consent, but we're recommending continuance based on the applicant contacted us and was not able to set up their neighborhood meeting and so under the code they really can't proceed with an action on it. It could be tabled for two weeks, it could be tabled for a month depending on the Commission's will, I guess. I have the sense they're ready to set that up and have that meeting. If you really wanted to get them adequate time to do that, a month would be in order.
So move.
Okay. So it's been recommended that it's continued because we can't take action because there hasn't been a neighborhood meeting.
Yeah, so if you voted on the consent, you would be voting to continue.
Yes, we'd be voting to continue. Number four.
I guess you might find if there's anybody in the audience...
Oh, does anyone want to hear? Is anyone here to, you're here for number three?
Anchor Investment.
Okay. Number four, request from Living Waters Fellowship represented by Joshua Daggett for the following, for property located at 3161 Southeast 22nd Street. Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with the Plan DSM creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan. And B, rezone property from P2 Public Civic Institutional District to RX1 Mixed Use District to allow for conversion of the premise to a daycare use. Is there anyone here who wants to hear this item? Anyone on the Commission?
I think...
Did you, you raised your hand?
Yeah, in regards to the section B there for Living Waters, it says daycare use, but I believe it should have been submitted as before an upper school care use, which is a different subset.
That would be a detail of their operation. Under our code, it's defined as daycare.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Anyone on the Commission who wants to hear this? Do I have a motion?
I'll move and we have March 19th for the continuance date for item three on the staff recommendation, but I thought I heard he wanted to move it to April 30 days to allow things to happen, is that what you said?
That's up to the Commission. I didn't get a specific request from the applicant, so...
Leave it as it is. Move consent.
Okay.
Okay. Consent's been moved. All in favor, raise your right hand. Looks unanimous to me, right? All right. Time for the public hearing.
So if you were here for one through four, you don't have to stay unless you want to see your government at work.
Eric, do you want to move it up?
Yeah, I'll, do you want to read that?
Okay, I'll read. Request from QSL Development represented by John Larson for review and approval of a preliminary plat Woodbury on property located in the vicinity of the 3401 block of East 56th Street to allow the property to be divided into 84 lots for one household development, two, is that two, two lots? Two lots for multi-household development and outlots for stormwater management and/or open space. Additional subject property is owned by J Larson Homes.
Yeah, and I want to correct that, that was corrected to say three lots for...
Okay.
There's one small lot and that was corrected on what got posted online, so it went out since the time of the packet. So the property, the property in question, the Commission's familiar, they went through a rezoning in the fall and then the new zoning ordinance superseded, but the zoning is reflective generally of what was approved in the previous code. You have an area, two sub areas that are zoned, N2B and N2A. Each of them allow different standards for the house type D that would be constructed and that's generally the house type that would be built in new development throughout the perimeter of the city for the most part. The 2A would require a wider lot configuration and area for the single-family dwelling or one household dwelling. It was continued a couple times to get that straightened out with the design that was being submitted to ensure that all those lots would comply with the standards of the new code for that house type and they've done that and resubmitted. The other lots to the east are accessed by a drive that is going to allow for separate development plans for those, or site plans for those areas. It's conceivable that those may come back with design exceptions depending on the specific building type design that gets built there, but that is zoned in X2 and allows for multi household development, so that would be anticipated there. I think they're still planning to follow through with the same program they had back when they initially tried to rezone this in the fall, or last year. I don't think they've changed their intentions. I do want to point out there's some floodway down in this area and floodplain and that's all zoned with the flood designation. They're essentially staying away from that with development. That's going to serve as open space for their site. They're going to, and I'll let the designer get up here and go over it, but they're going to reconfigure this to serve the stormwater needs and they've done design work, they're reshaping of the property to ensure that water that is in, that's coming out of the west through the property to the west is managed properly and get, and taken to where it needs to go for any detention required and that that shouldn't be an impact in a 100-year or less frequent storm. So right now our requirements and reviews are based on 100-year events, so... And I'll let the designer again kind of explain any nuances if you're curious about how that works for that situation, but I think that was kind of the big issue. The other thing that was of concern kind of initially was the fire access and that's been addressed for the areas to the east. The challenge to the east, of course, is getting access to it because you're not coming through the flood area and the church is preventing access from the north directly. So that was the Fire Marshal's Office or Fire Prevention looked at that and they're satisfied with what's being proposed now with all the radiuses on the streets and everything. And then the trail, Parks staff has worked with them to provide the trail alignment that's shown in the preliminary plat. I think they will continue to work with Parks to, when that Parks is ready to move on that project because they're going to have to also coordinate with other properties to the south and north to get that realignment to occur. In fact, you may see in the future a amendment to Plan DSM and move DSM to add that into the system of the trail system. But staff is recommending approval of this, subject to compliance with all administrative review comments. And then, I want to make sure, and then we want to make, we want to make sure that the, I think I have my, not working. We want to make sure that there's an easement provided for the trail that Parks and Recreation is shown. It may not show exactly as it is on the preliminary plat, but once there's a final plat, we will want that defined so that that gets dedicated with the final plat. But, so it's shown generally in the preliminary plat, the final plat will have to be consistent with that. Any questions?
No.
I'll let Brent from Snyder kind of give you more detail on, or if you have any questions about some of the concerns I think that have already come up before.
Okay, please state your name and address and then sign the sheet, please.
Get to work. You can hear my members, my name is Brett Colp, I'm with Snyder and Associates at 2727 Southwest Snyder Boulevard in Ankeny, Iowa, representing QSL Development and J Larson Homes. John Larson is the developer and owner of both of the entities. On this site, approximately 65 acres located just east of East 56th Street and southwest of the 65 bypass. As Eric has explained, this is a floodplain down there, it's a creek area. This is a site where the N2A zoning is from here north, that's a 60-foot wide lot, minimum area of 7,500 square feet. And to the south at this point here, south is the N2A, which is a 75-foot wide lot and 9,000 square foot minimum lot size. This area to the east, and thanks for correcting that, Eric, but three lots over here will be a future preliminary plat, but when we went through the rezoning last year in July, August, it was just, there was an intent or the requirements at that time was to kind of show intent. So we'll come back and get that modified and probably have some design options or alternatives on that in the future. So the first phase of development that they're looking at is approximately this area up and through here. So we are working through, this has an existing pond in this area that will be enhanced to provide the stormwater quality and water quality quantity that is required. We've done an extensive modeling, a swim model, which is a very extensive model on how the stormwater works into the site, through the site, detains and then outlets down through this location. We will be required to, and we are working with the DNR on a dam permit for that existing pond. It's a newer pond, but it would never get a dam permit, so we're keeping the embankment of the pond in place and kind of enlarging it to provide the required stormwater through this, that's required to the city of Des Moines. Utilities, WRA brought a sanitary sewer up through here, I think it was last year, I think they did the construction of it, so that's available for us to connect onto and extend into the other roadways itself. And then water is located along East 56th Street. There are some pretty major encumbrances with gas main coming up through here and also overhead transmission, high voltage overhead transmission up through here. So besides the floodplain and the interstate, we have all these other things that we're kind of working around and working through that process with those different entities itself. During the course of approval at the council, there was, I don't know if you can see this, it might be easier on this side, but the council, one of the council members, prior to this layout, we had just lots here with side yard swales to accommodate, there's two points of flow coming from this lot here. A council member requested that we not have lots there, so as you can see with this design, this whole area, we removed, I think it was three lots in here, and so that becomes now an outlot owned by the association, so we're not trying to get the amount of flow coming off our neighbor to the west in between the lot lines. From there, we gather that up, take it through a large box and out into the pond. On the south here, on the south, currently our flows go onto the neighbor and then down and out. We're doing a cutoff swale, gathering it here in a box to avoid that sheet flow off-site, taking it down to that same area, a small sump and then outletting into the pond. That kind of shows the pond and the different levels of the pond that we're doing. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of the items on the preliminary plat.
Do you agree with the staff recommendations? Are you in agreement with all those?
Yes.
Questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in support of this project? All right. Anyone want to speak in opposition? Okay. Please state your name, address, and then we need you to sign the sheet right there on the table.
Matt Murphy, 3301 East 56th Street.
Maybe get a little closer.
Pull that mic closer. Pull it closer. All right.
Sorry.
And so it's Matt Murphy. I live at 3301 East 56th Street, which is represented on the chart as N2A, I think is right over the top of my house. I was here in July, offered my thoughts on what I think, how this affects my property. None of that has changed and Eric was good enough to give me a call at about 4:30 today and so I've just seen the new plan. Took me about 30 minutes to get here, so I had about 30 minutes to digest what Snyder and Associates and John Larson are working to mitigate what was discussed the last time. So I don't know if I'm in support or if I'm against this at this point because I've got about 30 minutes of looking at it. What I see right off the bat is while there is kind of a retention pond effect to that outlot that Snyder Associates identified, if you look at the contour lines of it, it is a three-foot, maybe a three-foot depression in the ground. And so as it relates to draining off my property so that the water doesn't stand on my property, I don't know if it does that or not. I have to believe the civil engineers look at these things and they decide how this is going to work. I am also interested in the 100-year flood data. I don't know when that 100 years started and when the next 100 years hits. I just know that every year in a two-to-three inch rain, which does occur, we're draining the property that is on the west side of 56th through two culverts that run on both sides of my property. It runs 15-foot wide and about a foot and a half deep. It is a lot of water. And so as that gets down on the east end of my property, it kind of splits off in two directions, but generally runs to the pond. So with what Snyder's has proposed here with an outlot and a way for that water to run off, absorb, however it's going to leave there, I don't know if that works or not. I would simply ask for time to take a look at it. I'll get a civil engineer, they'll come out and basically read the plans and tell me, is this going to work or not? So the last time I was here was July. I was here for the past two hearings that it was on the agenda, didn't get briefed, but generally that is a lot of time for Snyder and Associates and John Larson and I have respect for both of them. They're very successful in their businesses. They had eight months to prepare what you see today. I had 30 minutes to prepare something in response, so I would just ask for more time before it's approved. And as I said the last time, the property line that runs between Karen Armstrong and myself, everything north of that, it has no effect on me, none whatsoever. And so I think that that was approved before and I assume that it's still approved. I have no objection to any of that. I am only concerned about that area that is directly east of my property and how that affects my property. Did I stand on my five minutes, I hope?
Yeah, no, that's fine. Questions?
Thanks for your consideration.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak about this issue? Okay. Well, I'll close a public hearing.
You can ask first.
Oh, rebuttal, do you want to, sorry. Thank you.
Brett Colp, Snyder and Associates. I mean, we've been working, I've got four engineers in our office that's been working on a very extensive swim model that's associated with this. We've worked with city staff, we've got two engineers down there we've been working with probably since December, working through all these questions and stuff. So I mean, this has been looked at and double looked at. We would just as soon, because this delays a lot of things, some tree removal items we had, I mean, we'd just as soon not delay it any further if that's a consideration tonight. So I mean, we'd like to move on so we could get additional items done, construction plans, begin some grading operations and stuff, so...
Could you speak directly though to his concern? I mean...
Yeah. I can kind of walk through that.
Matt, can you hear all this? Yeah, I want to make sure you can hear.
Yeah.
All right.
Currently on his site, part of our site flows onto his site. There's a swale that comes down through here and a swale that comes down through here. These pipes outlet here on the west side, I'm not sure if the basins are built, will be stormwater detention basins and kind of the metered flow there. We opened all of this up here and set the road elevation at, one moment, please. That's set at... At 106, 106. What happens in here is this water comes in, it's not a detention or retention, it's in a sump, so when that water starts building up, it can get into the intake faster. This is a 42-inch pipe here, this is a 24, and this one's a 24. So what we did at this location, we put a big five-by-five box that's open on all five, all four sides, 100-year pipe out, plus we set the road at an elevation, when this starts filling up, it'll go over the road before it flows back onto that, or wouldn't flow back on it, it would just build up and go back on. So I mean, we've looked at that in great detail. We've collected, we've cut off the water that used to flow toward him, cut it off here, put an intake in here, put 100-year pipe once again along in here and that would hopefully flow down to our street. So we've eliminated a lot of flow that used to go onto there, that's not going to be flowing there. Plus we set this at an elevation with the size of pipe to overflow and head to the pond prior to causing damage on the upstream property. So like I say, we've been working with a couple of the development engineers since December going through this, so we've, you know, got a lot of review, a lot of discussion.
Yeah, great.
Where does this process go after we vote on it tonight, staff?
So they would finalize the documents in accordance with... in accordance with the administrative comments plus your action? My understanding is they would submit construction drawings and grading plan, grading permit, to begin moving earth on the site.
So this goes back to the permit and development office?
Well, they have to sign off on all those comments, yeah. I don't think there's a lot, actually. But they'll get the final document. And then they will also have to review public improvement plans that would actually go to, I think they go to city council. So the construction contracts, yeah.
What we're up against right now is the bat habitat for April 15th. We can't go in here and do tree removals after April 15th. So if we delay it two weeks or four weeks, it's just gonna, it could delay the project for a year.
There's migrating bats. So we have a couple of projects like this around Des Moines. If the trees don't get removed by the time their migration pattern hits Des Moines, then they got to be left for the duration of the season and then before they, yeah.
That's interesting. Questions, other questions? Yes, yes.
A question, would it be appropriate for Matt to ask a question, or if he has one of the engineer now?
I would make, I guess, a comment.
Okay, come...
Just to put the issue of the trees in perspective, there are no trees except for, well, there are two trees. But there's only one that is in the area that I'm talking about. And I don't know if they're going to take the big weeping willow tree down. It's about a 75-year-old tree. It's a beautiful tree. I hope they're not taking that down. But I don't think that's the tree they're talking about. All those trees are to the south of my property. So the area that I'm talking about, again, is just directly east of my property. So nothing to the north, nothing to the south concerns me with regards to the runoff of water from the property. I do appreciate what they're talking about on the south side of the property with regard to how they're going to get that water to run off. That doesn't mean that much to me over there. Anything that they do on the south side of the property, it's a forest reserve right now. It can only beautify the area. But again, directly east of the property by the pond. That is, that's the area that I'm asking. Give me time, allow me to have a civil engineer come in and explain what is going to happen. And then that person can tell me about 100-year flood data, whether that is correct or not. I don't know. Basically, everybody right now is counting on 100-year flood data in a model. I don't know what any of that means.
So even based on his explanation, you're still, you would still like to have more time?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify this.
Yeah, I don't know how long it takes to get a civil engineer to be able to, that I can hire to take a look at this. But I can't imagine that it's going to be in less than a month.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Well, I'll close a public hearing and time for discussion.
Sure, what can we do to make everybody happy? I've got design expert down there. What can we do to make everybody happy?
My opinion is that Snyder and Associates has looked at it and city staff has looked at it. And what I see as the proposal, he's not worried about the south side. He's worried about what comes off the west through the two pipes and sideswipes his property and heads off to the east. What Brett has told us is that the top level of the road that they're proposing through there is below the elevation of his property. So to me, the water that's flowing from those two pipes beside his property is going to flow down to the sump through a box culvert. And if it gets too full, it's still going to flow across the top of the road. So it's not going to affect his property. So in my opinion, as a landscape architect and not an engineer, he's going to waste his money by hiring an engineer. But that's just me. So I would say we should pass it on. But that's my opinion.
That's a good opinion. Other thoughts, perspectives? Somebody want to make a motion?
Would you make that as a motion, Greg?
I move staff.
Second?
I don't have a problem with that. I, in understanding that the road is lower than Mr. Murphy's property, where'd Brent go? Is that true?
That is correct.
So that you've got a belt and suspenders approach to this thing? Meaning, say your five-foot box gets backed up, the water's going over the road? Is that the way it happens?
That is correct.
I always learned that as, I called it a free out. So no matter what the mechanical devices, the pipes and everything you put stuff in, you still need, it's a stream. And so you don't want to impede the stream. And so that low point is lower than a floor elevation or whatever you don't want to screw up. And so it is. So to me, we've provided the free out that allows it to flow away. Makes sense to me.
It seems to me there are more systems in place with this plan to divert the water away from his property than there are currently. So seems like it would make sense.
Other comments? Well, we have a motion on the floor to approve staff. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. So, thank you. I hope that we got some questions answered.
Mr. Murphy will be able to follow actions at city council that would be for the public improvement plans. The final plat will, for the first phase of this, would go through the city council. So if he wants to track it through the process and will make available anything in the record that's submitted for review or approval, administratively available to him if he wants to take that to his, you know, people that he wants to have a look at it. But, so as this moves forward, there's still opportunity for him to weigh in on the process, I should say.
Well, and I imagine they're all talking. They don't seem to be at each other's throat. And I imagine that Mr. Murphy could be invited to Snyder to see the modeling.
Yeah, I think you said that before.
I have one comment, Eric. On section eight of the staff report, the last paragraph, it says on December 15th, 2020, the conditional zoning was repealed and the existing zoning became effective.
Yeah, that's probably a bad date.
Yeah, I think that...
Should be 2019.
Yeah, I think so. You can catch it. And I have a question for Mr. Murphy. Do you have a copy of the drawings that we were given?
I emailed the PDF to him. That's the, I think that's what he's talking about, the 30-minute opportunity. But if Brent submits the final for staff sign-off on the staff comments, I will make that available to him as well, so he has that.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Do we have any committee or director's reports? All right. Thank you, safe travels. A motion to adjourn, sorry. Motion to adjourn, okay. Emily?
Oh, you got motion.
Oh. All right?
To adjourn.
All in favor?
I was going like this.
Well done, Jan. Thank you very much.